Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right, we'll bring this audit committee meeting together Thursday, October 13th, here at four o'clock. The first order of business is approval of the minutes from Thursday, August 25th, 2022. Would anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Let's have a vote. All in favor say yes.
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 All opposed, same sign. And now we'll move on to our third order of business reports and updates. We'll start off with the Spectra food service agreement follow-up. Ryan, please address us at your convenience.
Oh, thank you, committee. Ryan Lawson, internal auditor. Today I've got for you a follow-up to our Spectra food service agreement, which was originally presented October in 2021. So our objectives here for this audit was to determine if Spectra is compliant with the major requirements of the Food and Beverage Service Agreement 17-4173, determine if the city has proper internal controls to ensure Spectra's compliance, and then determine if ASM has proper controls to ensure Spectra's compliance. A little bit of follow-up methodology we did, we obtained the most recent version of the procurement policy and procedure manual, which was updated February of 2021. We verified the most recent insurance documents were submitted and had the correct locations and amounts listed. And then we also received an updated checklist that ASM was filling out to ensure compliance with the agreement. So specifically to our recommendations, our recommendation one was that Spectra develop and implement procedures to ensure compliance is maintained throughout the terms. And some of the kind of management responses down below referred to that, so this response is really just referring mostly to the 45 days insurance renewal requirement, which we found originally they didn't have provided within that 45 days renewal. And so as it happens, we, the city has actually changed that requirement going forward to a 15-day requirement with the option via approval, approval to even reduce it down to a one day prior to, prior to the insurance being out of, out of date. So that recommendation has been implemented going forward with that new requirement. Recommendation two was that Spectra provide updated insurance certificates reflecting the correct location and the correct amount of automobile insurance. Originally, we found that they were still listing the Orpheum Theater when they were no longer providing services to them, and they only had $1 million of automobile insurance when the contract says they had to have 1.5 million. So we got those updated insurance documents and verified that the Orpheum was removed and that they had increased umbrella coverage to cover that 500,000 of automobile insurance. Thirdly, we recommended that city management develop a internal policy and procedures to help with contract compliance and management. And their response is kind of long here, so I'm going to go in sections here. The first section regarding insurance certificates really kind of ties in with the, our first and second recommendation of removing the Orpheum and updating the automobile. So in addition to that, Finance has also implemented a new software called MyCOI, and this lets them manage those insurance certificates for every vendor that the city deals with. And the vendors can automatically upload new certificates. They get alerts when insurance is about to expire and all those things, and they can communicate within the software on any additional remedies needed. And I'm just jumping down to the checklist point. They have, ASM and the city have developed a checklist with 17 compliance items that ASM is responsible for filling out every year and throughout the year as they are managing Spectra's compliance with the agreement. For the audit, we originally, the Spectra audit, we originally found that the 2019 audit was not completed in time, and this was due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We did find that the most recent audit was completed on time, but so that audit was just at, is added as one of those items on the checklist that ASM is filling out each year throughout the year. And then finally there at the bottom, they, Finance has installed a contract management policy, and they have embedded it into their procurement policy and procedure manual. And this is just to help to provide those controls over contract compliance for the city. So we found that all those items there and that management response had been successfully implemented. For our fourth recommendation here, we recommended ASM to develop their standard operating procedures to ensure they're able to monitor Spectra's compliance with the agreement. And this goes back to that checklist that they have built with the city with those 17 items of compliance that ASM fills out throughout the year, each year. And we received the 2022 checklist from them, and it was filled out, showing that they are adhering to it. And then finally here, we had an opportunity for improvement. At the end of this agreement and before they write the new one, we found a few language inconsistencies within the agreement. So we just recommended that they look at those changes and make it more consistent throughout the agreement. And Tuesday, they presented the new agreement to the council, so we reviewed that agreement, and all of the language was correct, and the inconsistencies we had previously found were corrected. So that is all we had for that. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you for that, Ryan. Are there any questions? Counselor Bronco?
So it sounds to me as though you made these recommendations, and they were very cooperative and have implemented everything that was necessary to implement now.
Yep.
And then the opportunity for improvement, even that has essentially been taken care of. Is that, would that be a fair characterization?
That's correct. At the time I wrote this report, the agreement wasn't out yet, the new one.
Right.
So since then, it's come out, so now I've reviewed it, and it has been implemented.
Well, that's terrific. Excellent work.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Gotch.
Question on the opportunity, opportunity for improvement.
Yes.
Is that something they're required to do, or is it optional for them?
Um, it's really, I mean, there were, so the two, two inconsistencies we found was in one spot, it said that they had to increase their place settings from 2,000 to 5,000, or to 3,000. And then in another spot, it said that they had to have 2,500. So it was just, which is the right number. So they removed that part that said they had to increase from 2,000 to 3,000. Now it's just set at 2,500. And then the other one was incorrectly, it showed the management term of the agreement ended in 2021, when it actually was 2022. So it just had one year off, but they did fix those here on this new one.
Any other questions? Okay, no action is required on this item. So we'll move on to the ASM Global Management Agreement. Ryan, when you're ready, fire.
All right, so we've got the audit of the management agreement between ASM Global and the city. Our objective here was to simply determine if ASM is compliant with those requirements listed in Agreement 17-4229. To provide you a little background, ASM Global is a venue management company that operates in stadiums, arenas, convention centers, and theaters worldwide. The services they provide include venue operations, asset management, content, safety, marketing, and they are able to bring the experience and knowledge of best practices from operating in those venues across the world. The city owns the Sioux Falls Arena, the convention center, the Orpheum, the Premier Center, and the baseball stadium. And in 2017, ASM and the city went and entered into an agreement to provide services for these facilities throughout, through 2022, with an option to extend for another five years, which they have just recently done. And then in 2019, the Orpheum was dropped off the list of these facilities, and management services was then provided by Washington Pavilion Management for the Orpheum. Our scope here of this audit was a review of the agreement, the terms of the agreement, and internal controls as they are currently in place. And then any detailed testing of transactions or reports was, included those that occurred during the calendar year of 2019. A little bit of methodology, the steps we performed in, in doing this audit, we interviewed the various management and staff who were involved. We reviewed policies, procedures, ordinances. We reviewed the external audit that was performed by Aid Bailey, and then we reviewed the items in Munis and Tyler Content Management, which is used to store agreements and the supporting documentation. Through, so on our, on the full report, we do list out all of the different requirements that we tested and how ASM is in compliance with those requirements. We separated them out into sections of account requirements, budget requirements, reporting requirements, and insurance requirements. And we did not have any findings. We found that each requirement we tested, they were in compliance with. But we did have one opportunity for improvement, and that was that during testing, we identified a third bank account, and that included funds that were used for pre-opening and grand opening activities. And these funds were provided by ASM in accordance with the original agreement, but the current agreement did not address that account or how those funds should be utilized. So we just recommended that the city include in future agreements some language specifying the usage and restrictions of that third bank account. So in response, they actually decided that that account was no longer needed. So Finance instructed ASM to transfer those funds into the operating account and close that third bank account. So that has been implemented. And I ask you for any questions on that one.
Mr. Bucknenberg?
With regard to the external audit, you reviewed that. Did, did they, did, did the auditors find any problems with internal control, immaterial weaknesses?
Kind of basically said, you know, we reviewed internal controls. They didn't have any findings or recommendations on their audit either.
And is that true for Spectra as well?
Yeah, yep, I believe so. Yep, their financial audits are pretty clean.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I would look for a motion to submit the report to the city council.
So moved.
I'd second that.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, that moves on to the city council. Now we'll go on to our next item. This is the damage recovery follow-up by Emily. Emily, when you're ready, go ahead.
All right. Emily Newell, internal auditor. I have for you today the follow-up on the damage recovery billing audit. Scroll down a little here for you. So our objective was to assess the status of management action plans for the recommendations that were previously noted in the damage recovery billing process audit that was issued in August, so a couple months back here. We confirmed standardized procedures were developed using the Viewworks software. We verified those updated standardized procedures also included a monitoring program. We looked at the language that was updated, as well as tested a random sample of damage recovery billing claims that had been paid so far in 2022, and found that they were all processed in compliance with the procedure documents. So we'll get in just a little more details for you of what our actual recommendations were. So our first one was to look at a, creating a formalized procedure for all of the property damage billing claims essentially. There was some discrepancies between individual departments, and so the management took a look at that, and they agreed that it would be a good thing to update. And their response was that they were currently implementing the Viewworks Asset Management software across several public works departments, and that they would be working and getting a formalized standard procedure for all of the departments that were using that. And it has already been implemented. So that should be a more standardized process across the board. For the second one, we recommended that Finance establish a monitoring program to ensure that the department procedures were in place and appropriately implemented that policy. They have updated their policy, and they're going to call it process auditing. So they've established what it's going to look like. They haven't actually conducted their first process audit of it yet, which is why it's marked, I'll scroll down for you, as in progress. It just hasn't actually been completed yet, but it's already established what it's going to look like. For recommendation number three, we had recommended that all department procedures for damage billing require that the supporting documentation be stored electronically. It was already being done in all except for one, and so they quickly had that implemented, and now all departments are doing it electronically. And then we had a couple opportunities for this one as well. We wanted to see a formalized procedure to aid departments in decision-making for write-offs. This is something that we didn't do a really in-depth review of write-offs for this particular audit, but it was an area that we saw could be improved for the future. And so Finance has already developed a more formalized procedure clarifying those write-offs in their larger, I think it's called the billing and collections policy and write-offs. So they have already worked that into the document, and it's been published for departments to use. And then the final opportunity was recommending that Viewworks be utilized as much as possible across the city for damage billing, just to, it's something they've already been rolling out, but to really take advantage of its opportunities to make this process really streamlined, to utilize that software going forward. And they agreed and were working on rolling it out to additional departments. And as they do that, to make sure that they were incorporating damage recovery processes in that step. That's pretty much it for this one, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Bronco?
Quickly, wanted to just make sure, these are some excellent recommendations, and making sure that there was harmony and cooperation, and there wasn't any disagreement about whether or not any of this should be implemented.
No, all of these were in agreement and very quickly implemented. So it was just at the last time that we met in August, the actual report was done, and I was able to really quickly do the follow-up because it was moving along.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Bucknenberg?
And just one follow-up. I think they're good suggestions and good, happy to see that they're being implemented. From my own information on the write-offs, do they have to get approved centrally? I mean, the departments aren't initiating and approving their own write-offs, are they?
That one is Finance, correct. Yep, that's a central Finance. And that recommendation is specific to, like Finance's central policy, not one that's within the department.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, no action is necessary on that. We're going to move on to our next item, golf management agreement. Ryan, let us know what's going on here.
All righty. So Ryan Lawson, internal auditor again. I performed an audit of the golf course management agreement between Landscapes Golf Management and the city. My objectives here for this audit was to determine if Landscapes or LGM is compliant with the scope of services requirements, the permit and insurance requirements, and the funding, budget, and reporting requirements that are laid out in the agreement, and then also to determine if the city is compliant with their scope of service requirements. To provide you a little bit of background, the city has three golf courses, which are Prairie Green Golf Course, Elmwood Golf Course, and Keene Park Golf Course, which they have to provide citizens the opportunity to play golf, host an event, and then purchase, options to purchase, food, beverage, and merchandise. And Landscapes Golf Management is a division of Landscapes United, and they serve many clients in providing third-party manager and operating services for golf courses nationwide. And in, in 2017, the city and LGM signed into an agreement, which put LGM in charge of managing the city's three courses on the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement. And once again, just like the ASM audit, the full report lays out all of the requirements that were tested, and what LGM is doing to, and the city are doing to comply with those requirements. So we'll go through a few of the things that we found. First, we were not able to find satisfactory evidence of insurance renewal within the 45-day requirement. Same thing as previous audits here. Finding two was that we did not see an exit box notification, which the agreement states needs to be listed on the city's website. When they click on a link to Sioux Falls Golf website, which is run by Landscapes, there needs to be that exit box notification letting the user know that they're leaving the city's website. And then thirdly, we, we're not able to find any evidence of the city providing their property insurance certificate to LGM at the beginning of the agreement. So we just weren't able to find any evidence of that. So we recommended, based off those findings, first, we just simply recommended that LGM begin their insurance renewal process earlier in the year so they are able to hit that 45-day requirement. But then once again, the city since then has changed the requirement down to 15 days with a further option via approval to, down to one day. And if we're looking at that 15-day requirement, LGM was actually in compliance with that 15-day requirement. Secondly, here, we recommended that the city implement that exit box notification, letting users know that they're leaving the city's website when they click on the Sioux Falls Golf link. And they have agreed, and they will add that link to the website for the city courses. And then thirdly, we recommended that the city adds Landscapes as an additional certificate holder for that property insurance, so that each year it gets renewed, the insurance company will automatically send that certificate over to LGM for their records. And they have actually, in working with them and letting them know of this recommendation, they've already added LGM as an additional certificate holder going forward. And then finally, we had an opportunity for improvement here for, the city has, there's a lot of items that require written approval from the city. In current practice, they were kind of printing forms off, signing them, scanning them, printing, signing, scanning. So we just recommended that they try to utilize some electronic signatures, just to kind of ease that process of obtaining the city's written approval, and then LGM can keep them for their records. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to hear them.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any questions? Mr. Bucknenberg?
Ryan, with, with regard to the audit report, the auditors provided a clean opinion, I presume.
Yep.
And what about any material weaknesses in internal control? Do they report on any?
Yep, no, nothing that we found. No weaknesses or anything like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? You know, this might be for this, and maybe a point moving forward, as I'll ask the last question here, but for the opportunities of improvement, you know, as listed here and in some of the others, are those opportunities tied to an internal control?
I would say it's more, so since these are kind of compliance audits, it's auditing whether they're in compliance with the agreement. So it's not a requirement to have electronic signatures. So that's why it's not a finding. It's just something that we've found could improve the process. So we were making that recommendation to help improve the process.
Sure, and, and probably for the auditors on the committee more than me is, and, and you guys, for your guys' as we continue to move on.
Yep.
It's, you know, why are they on there, and, and is it good practice to have those on there? So just a thought for the group as we continue on, it doesn't have to be answered today. We'll meet again, when we meet again, and we'll, we'll have that discussion publicly. So just a follow-up to Mr. Gotch's comment. But at this time, I'd look for a motion to submit this report to the city council.
Move to approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Ryan. We're going to do utility, utility billing, cash handling. Emily, whenever you're ready, we'll look forward to hearing your report.
Hello. So the final one that we have for today is utility billing, cash handling. Our objective was to determine if cash collections are safeguarded, deposited in a timely manner, and accurately, accurately recorded in utility billing. The department located in the basement of City Hall is in charge for Sioux Falls residents that are utilizing the city water and electric utilities. That is approximately 2,700 electric customers and 70,000 water customers as of December 2021. So the, this audit definitely touches on quite a few more water customers, just because it's mostly who they serve, but there are some electric customers in there as well. The meters are read monthly to determine water consumption or electricity usage. Bills are generated on a monthly cycle, and then they're due 21 days after the bill date. They can be paid in person at a drop box, by mail, automated payment plans or ACH, online bill payment through the website, and also over the phone. They do also charge different types of service fees, such as new account fees, delinquent bill collections, turn-on fees, account deposits, return payment charges, and late fees. Now, getting into what we found, there are a few findings, and then a couple opportunities on this one. Finding number one was a lack of consistent policy for credit card signatures. So there are some departments in the city that require signatures at certain dollar amounts, some that require them not at all. And so this is just referring to an overarching need for a policy to keep things standard across the city. Utility billing did not require credit card signatures. The finding number two was updated procedures needed for the physical security of assets, and that was referring to the safe. So the safe is always locked overnight, but it wasn't practiced during the day because it is behind a locked key access-only door. So there is some mitigating factors there. The, the door itself is badge-only restricted access, but the safe inside of that during the day was not previously. And then the third finding was no secondary approval required for refunds or bill adjustments. It's not really so much refunds in the instance of this department, but more of a billing adjustment. So in the most common instance, you would say have a leaking toilet, and so you would be billed for usage at the higher tier. And so then you might come in and say, I went in and I fixed this, this is my receipt for getting that fixed. And then they would do a bill adjustment to adjust your usage from the higher tier of consumption to the lower tier. And so the, it's not like they're excusing your bill or refunding anything, it's just knocking it down from the higher tier to the lower tier. And so we wanted to see some additional approval and review of those. And then the fourth finding was a lack of management review for the change funds. And so it was written in their internal policy and procedures that they, the manager go through and do a review of the change funds and reconcile them. And it just wasn't being done at the interval in the policy. So we just wanted to see it adhere to. They are done by the utility billing leads, so it's not that it wasn't being done at all, but the, a secondary review at the supervisor level. So our recommendations, the first one was, we recommend Finance and utility billing in conjunction develop a specific policy or procedure to govern the credit card transactions and specific dollar amount thresholds, which I can say they have already agreed within, are working on that. So that's something that is in the progress. For recommendation number two, we recommend establishing a written policy or procedure dictating a regular timeframe to update the safe combination, including verifying the appropriate individuals have access to the combination and the room. And so that was related to the physical security of assets, just making sure that it's regularly changed, and that the, when there's turnover, that people who previously had access to it are no longer, as well as to the door that's on the outside. Recommendation number four, we recommend developing an approval process for refunds or adjustments based on a dollar amount threshold or transaction, segregating the duty of the cashier who processes the adjustment. So that would be the person, like when you come in to talk to somebody, that you need your bill adjusted because you fixed the leak. And then also the second individual reviewing the documentation. And they have also already looked at how they're going to implement this moving forward, at getting dollar amount thresholds in place for higher ones. And then also there is a report that's run that has all of them, all of the adjustments that are done, that each day the supervisor is going to review. So that one's already been looked at. And then number five, we recommend that management reviews for change funds and cash drawers be conducted on the schedule that's required by the utility billing, cash receipts and cash drawers procedure, and the cash transaction and change fund procedure. And so that's what we were talking about in finding number four. They already have it documented in their internal policy and procedures. We just want to make sure that they're doing it on that schedule, and that they're also keeping documentation when it's done, so that we can verify on the dates and the times that they went through and verified and reconciled. And then a couple of opportunities, we recommend updating the department policy or procedure for completing the deposit slips, to have two indicators of the individual who's filling it out. Could be their C number. It's mostly getting a, if there's only an initial or signature, it can be really difficult to read. And this is a pretty small department, so it's not necessarily, but if it were to grow citywide, we, we just want to make it more easy to trace back to the individual for accountability who's completing the deposit slip. They are initially are writing names on it right now. This is just an opportunity because it's an additional step. And then we recommended creating and implementing a master tracking document to document their daily fund balances as the till is counted down each day. They're individual documents right now, and just for- They're individual documents right now, and just for monitoring processes, going back and reconciling, just one document for all of their cash drawers, whether it was over and under, so it's easier to review. Any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you, Emily. Are there any questions? Very thorough. Thank you very much, and thank you for completing that. Very grateful for that. I'd look at this time for a motion to submit this report to the city council.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Tom, if you're in favor of that, please say yes.
Yes.
If opposed, please have the same sign. Okay, we'll send that on. All right, we'll go to our next item, which is committee member remarks. Are there any committee member remarks at this time? I have a little note here, and as, I guess I'm going to be the only one that talks right now on this. Emily, Ryan, thank you very much for your work. You guys are doing an exceptional job, and you should be proud of your work. These auditors up here and, and us on the committee appreciate it, and these are thorough. If you read through them, you're getting it done, so, so thank you for that. And Jim, thank you, sir, for stepping in and helping us, you know, kind of lead the team, and, and we appreciate your work on this as we are moving forward, so, so thank you for that. I will open it up now for public comment. Is there any public comment on the items addressed today? All right.
I move to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing information listed in subdivisions 1-27-1.5 subsection 8 and 1-27-1.5 subsection 17 pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 subsection 6.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, there's a second. We're going to do a roll call vote on this. Clerk? Committee members, Bronco?
Yes.
Bucknenberg?
Yes.
Gotch?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move into executive session. For everyone that isn't going to be involved in this, can you please clear the chambers, and we'll shut the door when you're done.